Good evening and thank you for joining the meeting of the Hamden Town Council for Monday, April 7, 2014. As to not disturb our meeting, please place your cellphones on silent or vibrate. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the public are reminded that all comments being made are broadcast over live cable television and over the Internet, and may be recorded and rebroadcast over the Internet outside of council control, sorry. We will now move on to councillor introductions. We'll start with councillor Saroy.
Greg Saroy, 89, Carmel Road, South, at-large.
Ivan McPike, District 1.
David Reidel.
Carol Dupree, at-large, Mayor.
Thomas Brandt, District 2.
Jean Lawless, District 3.
Bill Shakespeare, at-large.
We are also joined at our table by Susan Lassard, our town manager, Tom Russell, the town attorney, and Denise Hodston, on her way, the town clerk. We're also—no, I already said that. If you are here today for the pledge discussion, that is item 3A. We have a few other items to dispense with first. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on an item on today's consent agenda? Does any councillor wish to set aside any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, unless there is an objection, the consent agenda is considered adopted. Public comments. This is time for public to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. This is not time to comment on the Pledge of Allegiance. All comments are to be directed through the Chair and debate with individual councillors is not allowed. Per council rules, comments are limited to five minutes per person. When you come to the podium, please state your name, address, and the subject of your comment for the record. I have already been asked by Mr. Jim Folsom, so we'll call him first.
Thank you, Mayor Dupree and councillors. My name is Jim Folsom and I live at 43 Highland Ridge. And if you are not real sure where Highland Ridge is, it's relatively new, but if I tell you it is immediately across the road from Calkins Farm Stand, then you will know right where we are. I've been working on a history project here in Hamden. We started last year with a video—it was of ten aspects of history in Hamden called "Hamden on the Penobscot," and that was played on Channel 7 for two or three weeks, I think, and is available at the library. And I'm also pleased to say that the Hamden Historical Society has been selling the DVDs, and I think they're up to around 50 now as a fundraiser. So there is certainly a great interest in history in Hamden. The next project that I picked up is the Old Burying Ground, which some of you will remember is right in back of the Masonic Hall, and it is where our earliest settlers are buried. It has very rapidly deteriorated because of weathering and lack of attention. That has improved, and I'm in the process of trying to implement some changes and upgrades in the Old Burying Ground. And this is mainly aimed at the fact that we have the 200th anniversary of the Battle at Hamden from the War of 1812, which comes along September 3 this September. My hope is that we'll have these improvements in place in time for that commemoration, and maybe even in time for Memorial, which is when the VFW recognizes the two British soldiers that are buried in the Old Burying Ground. I want to just give you a little overview of some of our improvements, and I do have pictures and handouts for you. My experience is, as soon as I pass these to you, your attention will come off me and will go on the pictures. So I want to tell you first, all of what we have done has been done by donation, some very large donations of local businesses. We have a new granite marker which has the names of the two British soldiers, Peter Bracewell, who was an infantryman, and Michael Kavanagh, who was a seaman. Those names have never been at that site before. There has been a generic marker donated by the Daughters of the British Empire, and this will add their names, so people will know who, in fact, is buried there. That is being donated by Rogan's Memorials in Bangor, and they're also going to clean the old stone and reset the stones, all as a community service by Rogan's. Another thing we're doing is adding an informational sign, which will talk about the families—the old settlers' families that are there—and the two British forces, and it will go on to talk briefly about the history of the Academy Hill area, and just a little bit about the battle in September 3 of 1814, when that first occurred. And this is intended to answer questions of visitors that come in there. And that is an all-weather sign. It's of a significant value. It is being donated by Sign Services Incorporated over in Stetson. We also have been given two very excellent British flags, called Union Jacks, by the Daughters of the British Empire, so that each of these veterans from that war—although they're British veterans, we still recognize them—will have their own flag flying over them, and those are all-weather Nile Glow flags, and those have been donated. The last piece that we want to accomplish is kind of a general paint-up fix-up of that area, which will include some improvements to the fence and the routine mowing and cleaning of that area, which the cemetery crew has picked up. I had a meeting over there with Chip Swan, and we're accomplishing most of this with public donation, and so the routine pieces of putting this all together will fall to that crew. So let's see, how much have I left out here? Oh, we should—let's let them have the pictures here now. There's a picture—one for each of you, everyone sitting at the table. There should be 10 copies, including—you get one, Denise.
Thank you.
This new granite marker is designed to blend with the one that is there now that was in place since 1940, but doesn't include the names of the two British forces. You can see Peter Bracewell's name there and Michael Kavanagh. And you can see in the lower picture—I'm holding up the all-weather sign there that's been provided by the Sign Services over in Stetson. So if all goes well with this project, we'll have it done for sure for the 200th anniversary on September 3, and maybe even—if we're lucky—by Memorial, which is the time when the VFW recognizes the veterans. In fact, the VFW has been helpful to me also. The two flags came in the mail with no flagstaffs, appropriate flagstaffs, so they furnished those, and we'll probably do some kind of a rededication of that site when the time is right. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll fold my tent.
May I, Madam Mayor? I know generally we don't. I wish you had let us know. This really should have been an agended item, because it's so extensive and so interesting to the public. And I would like—in the future here, maybe I can discuss it with you, Jim, to get back and get a little more extensive history into the Battle of Hamden, for the public to know, because there are a lot of people out there who are not familiar with how the battle took place, and why there's a seaman in here with an infantryman, is because they landed down in Castine and came up with the seamen, and they fought off in the Penobscot here. And for those—the public doesn't have it, but these pictures—if you look at the picture here of Jim, to the left, you'll see that big map on the wall. That's the identical map I have that I wanted—have donated—not identical, but identical-type map—that I would like to see placed right over on that wall over there, if we can ever get it framed. But I'd like to get you back again in the future, Jim, and have you do a little more discussion about this. And Jim is the one who, by the way, is responsible for our founding father—for—I believe you were there during that ceremony?
Oh, yes, the reinterment of the Benjamin Wheeler site at the Crosby Cemetery in Bangor.
That's right.
I was there, yes.
Right.
As were several people from council.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, or issues? So we're going to go full steam ahead with this, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on any items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Policy agenda. We have nothing under policy agenda. Okay, sorry about that. No public hearings, no nominations, appointments, and elections. Unfinished business. I would like Attorney Russell to take a moment to remind councillors and the public of rules of respect decorum in debate, if you wouldn't mind.
I guess I don't have to say, other than you're supposed to be civil to one another and not make personal remarks and just discuss the issues. That's basically it in a nutshell.
Thank you. I kind of caught him off guard. Item 3 is the Pledge of Allegiance. Normally, I don't say anything before I turn it over for discussion to the person who put it on the agenda, but I just have something quick to say, if you don't mind, councillor Shakespeare. It's been a tough week, this last week, tough few weeks, reading about how horrible I am. I don't know if I can do this. I served 10 years in the Navy, and I was taught—that taught me that leaders do not look to shift blame, they accept responsibility. If I offended anyone, in my opening of the pledge remarks, I apologize. I consider all troops to be in harm's way, not only those serving in combat, as we saw in Fort Hood. You don't have to be in a combat zone to be in harm's way. I also consider all those not in uniform anymore to still be in harm's way. Twenty-two veterans each day commit suicide in America. Mentally, they're still in harm's way. This week, I sat down and wrote a 10-page speech documenting all the lies told about me in the last three weeks. And I was going to come here and try to embarrass people, and there are blameless personal attacks against my family. But my husband and I prayed about it, and two passages of scripture came to mind that changed my heart from anger to compassion. I apologize for getting emotional. The first one is Luke 6:27-28. "But I tell you, who hear me: love your enemies; do good to those who hate you; bless those who curse you; pray for those who mistreat you." Romans 12:17-18. "Do not repay anyone evil for evil; be careful to do what is right in the eyes of everyone, if it is possible, as far as it depends on you. Live at peace with everyone." So I won't turn this political. That's not who I am, even though it might make me feel better. I'm a patriot. I love my country. My country comes second only to my love of God and my family. Until the council votes to remove the pledge from our calendar, we'll continue to start the meetings this way. I will never criticize anyone who decides not to do that. For two months, two councillors exercised their right to sit during the pledge. Never did I or any other council member criticize them for doing so. We all respect their decision and kept the town moving forward. Until this video surfaced, they were silent in opposition to the pledge. We had a Bangor Daily News reporter in the room each council meeting, and since she never wrote about the sitting, apparently it was a non-issue. Neither one of them raised an issue with the press, wrote an op-ed, or made a fuss after it was finally approved, not a peep until the video surfaced. I was horrified at some of the comments that were written about my colleagues, my fellow veterans, councillor Brandon Shakespeare. No one deserves to be treated like that in America. My husband and I fought for this country in uniform, for the right to any American to exercise their rights, whether we agree with them or not. I'm ready to move forward, put all this behind us. We have a tough budget to get ready for, and I need councillors to bring their A-game to each meeting and not be distracted by pettiness. As I close, I'd like to all ponder this famous quote from Senator Margaret Chase Smith of Maine. "The right to criticize, the right to hold unpopular beliefs, the right to protest, the right of independent thought, the exercise of these rights should not cost one single American citizen his reputation or his right to a livelihood; otherwise, none of us could call our souls our own." Thank you. And councillors are reminded about rules of decorum, and not to make personal attacks against citizens, and everything should please go through the Chair. Again, I'm sorry I got emotional. Chair recognizes councillor Shakespeare.
Thank you for your kind comments. Shouldn't we have public comment first on this issue?
Oh, I just thought you might want to explain.
No, I have it written down here.
Okay.
You know, the public can see that Tom and I did do the pledge, and I'll be explaining that in what I wrote here, why.
Okay.
And my feelings on it, and Tom's feelings on it, and I do want to thank you for your consideration of Tom and I being veterans, and you're absolutely correct. We were silent. We had our reasons. I think I've explained them well in the past. I'm not going to go into them again for not standing and doing the pledge, although I have said over and over again, I do believe in the pledge, I love the flag, I served for the flag, and I don't want to get emotional either, but I feel the same way you do. So I think we'll let the public, and then I'll read what I have to say. And, you know, we all have our constitutional rights, and you're correct. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shakespeare. I'd open this for public comment. Members of the public are reminded that all debate must be addressed through the Chair, and it needs to be in respectful nature. Please keep in mind that there are children in the building—I don't know if there still are—but—and may be watching at home, so please watch your language, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And council rule 16A states that in the event of a large number of persons wishing to speak on an issue, this limit may be changed to ensure for all those who wish to have an opportunity to do so. So today, assuming that there will be a large number, I'd like to limit the debate to three minutes per person, and Denise will be our timekeeper. She'll give you a five-second thing when your time is almost up. And also, to keep things moving, I've added two chairs behind the podium over there. If she wished to speak, please come sit in one of the chairs until the person ahead of you has finished speaking. Then you can immediately go to the podium and start speaking while someone else fills the empty chair. Okay, public comment is now open. You may come to the podium. And the next person, please, fill the chairs behind.
My name is Ronald Lupo. I live at 10 Patterson Street in Hamden. I've been here since '71. I'm a retired military veteran, Air Force, 20 years of service. I come here to address this incident that happened. In June 1777, the first Congress adopted an important resolution which stated that the flag of the United States be made of 13 stripes of alternate red and white stripes, and the Union would be white stars representing each state of this Union. Since then, the American flag has been recognized throughout the world for men struggling for their freedom. A pledge was written to remind us of—excuse me—all who decided allegiance to the country and its ideals. Recently, on the town of Hampton, two of the government council members refused to say the pledge or even stand for it. They have shed a town, its residents, along with the veterans since 1776, who shed their blood for this country. Whatever their personal beliefs are, they're not worthy to represent this town, and should resign. If they do not resign, residents—they represent—should request a recall for their positions. These so-called representatives of our town, its residents, and all the vets in this country, they owe an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, please.
My name is Jeffrey King, 54 Summer Street. I realize that I'm obviously pretty young, and I probably don't know as much about what I'm talking about as I should, but I come from a long line of veterans. My great-grandfather Frelick was a veteran, my grandfather Frelick is a veteran, my grandfather Roberts was a veteran, my uncle Frank was a veteran, my cousin Frank was a veteran. I have at least a dozen friends at school that are going into the military, and I respect each and every one of them for their bravery. I have—I've debated going into the military when I realized that I just don't have the courage to go into battle. I don't think that I'd be able to handle myself for many reasons. One is because I have anxiety attacks. But I—we do say the Pledge of Allegiance at school now, which we didn't do for the first couple of years I was in high school. I don't say the pledge. I stand up for it because I don't want to be ridiculed by my peers, and I honestly—I respect these two men for being brave enough to sit down for the pledge, and obviously, they care about what people think, but to be brave enough to put up with what people are saying about them, and still standing strong to their opinions, and holding on to what they believe in, I think that that's more important than saying the pledge for purely political reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Kristin. I live in Hamden. Been up here a number of times to speak. I had some prepared statements that I was going to say, and your comments, Madam Chair, were enlightening. I appreciate you being willing to speak the truth as you see it, and I appreciate you being willing to take the blame, responsibility, however you address that in your comments. I'm torn, and I think perhaps a lot of my fellow citizens are torn as well, because I too was quite shocked, and I read 40 pages of emails and comments that were in the consent agenda from people all over the country, and I was dismayed at the comments and the despicable rudeness that I saw from strangers to strangers. However, on the other side of it, I can see it's a very emotional, very emotional issue for a lot of people. Some people stand, some people don't, some people can't, because they fought. I consider myself to be a patriot. I didn't fight in a war. I wasn't in the military. I don't know what that's like. I can appreciate that's pretty horrible, and that it's an honor to serve, and that it's an honor for us to be amongst those men and women who have stepped up to serve. It absolutely is an honor. But we have a choice. Comes down to a choice. Do we stand? Do we sit? Do we say it? Do we not? For this town, this council, the rule was passed weeks ago, 5 to 2. The pledge has been adopted. It is stated at the start of every council meeting. It's up to us whether or not we want to say it. My personal belief is that it disrespects the men and women who fight, who have fought, who will fight, when we don't at least stand. That's just my personal belief. The fact that these men are heroes for not standing, I don't—I don't agree with that. I believe that patriotism is heroic, and I believe that when we show our patriotism, when we stand and honor the men and women who fought and died and lost limbs, that's heroic. It's unfortunate that our town is cast in this light. I've heard people say they're not doing business in Hamden. I've heard people say they're avoiding this area for vacations. This is ludicrous. This is ludicrous, not saying the pledge. I heard one councillor say that it's ludicrous to say the pledge. No, that's not what's ludicrous. What's ludicrous is that this comment, this discussion is even happening at all. So, yes, we are free to choose, but we're not free from the consequences of those choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
These are not my prepared remarks. It's the agenda. Mayor Dupree, members of the council, fellow citizens of the United States, citizens of Hamden. I am Jim Davitt, a Hamden resident. I live on Summer Street. I'm a Vietnam veteran, a recovering attorney, a professor of Justice Studies at the University of Maine at Augusta on the Bangor campus, and, by way of full disclosure, I am a candidate for the House in this district. When this brouhaha first broke, I was saddened by a comment on a very prominent Hamden Facebook page that posted the video of the infamous session with the words "How embarrassing," and basically invited the public to voice its displeasure, which it did. The one thing about Facebook is you don't really know if the names of the people who are responding, are their actual names, or where they're from. I have read all of the emails that were part of the packet for tonight, and was struck by how vitriolic they were, especially the unsigned ones. More saddening were the emails from folks who stated they were veterans and that the actions of two councillors brought disrespect upon Hamden, the flag, and the United States. I say just the opposite, and that Hamden should not be embarrassed, but rather proud. Many politicians are fond of citing a statement attributed to Thomas Jefferson that, quote, "Where a government fears its people, there is liberty." Aside from the fact that Thomas Jefferson never wrote or said such a thing, Aside from the fact that Thomas Jefferson never wrote or said such a thing, I would prefer that we follow his other statement, which we do know, he wrote. "I have sworn upon the altar of Almighty God eternal hostility to every form of tyranny over the mind of men. We would all do well to make that pledge our own." If there's one thing that is certain about the Pledge of Allegiance, it is that it originated about 1898, written by two, what we now call socialists, and actually, they call themselves socialists. It was written as a means to inculcate patriotism in schoolchildren, and I use that word deliberately, Over the years, the pledge acquired a kind of sanctity normally ascribed to the Constitution. But every writer who took time to express outrage at our counselors and our town, and by the way, of those emails that I read, I could only identify nine of which seemed to originate in Maine. Sorry, Denise. And the others were from all over the world, and I'm not sure that somebody from Wyoming is ever going to come to visit Hampden or ever plan to visit Hampden, but it's not exactly a destination site, but they'd be welcome anyway. The pledge, what these writers have never learned, the pledge is not sacrosanct, it is not holy, it is not law. The courts of this country have consistently held that no one can be forced to recite the pledge, stand for it, or be punished for refusing to do either. Indeed, the courts are extremely uniform that these actions or non-actions are at the heart of the First Amendment's right to free speech. If those writers have forgotten that, at least some of our schools have not. And I quote from a student handbook in Maryland discussing the topic patriotic exercises. "You cannot be required to say a pledge, sing an anthem, or take part in patriotic exercises. No one will be permitted to intentionally embarrass you if you choose not to participate." I suggest that we ought to take those words to heart and make it part of how we treat our fellow citizens. If our Constitution means anything, it is simply that as a country of free people, we cannot be forced to live by someone else's idea of patriotism.
Mr. Davitt, are you almost through? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we limited to three minutes, so...
I will end it quickly. Thank you. We cannot follow someone else's definitions of patriotism. To do that violates the very principles of this nation. I believe we owe counselors Brand and Shakespeare our thanks and honor for showing us how hard it is to live with principle and to suffer the outrages of those who violently disagree with the rights guaranteed to them by the Constitution. Remember the off-sided words, fascism will come to America wrapped in a flag. If we wish to truly respect that flag, then we do it by exercising our rights to disagree without hatred, without bitterness, without anger, or veiled threats. In the end, we are all Americans who can speak our minds freely without fear of imprisonment or death. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
My name is Ronald A. Rainfret. I work for the American Legion. I'm a State Vice Commander. A few weeks ago, I had phone calls, like everybody else. And I made a time to come up here to talk with the town manager, and I wanted to find out what is actually happening. This is a wonderful country, and I understand these two men here, they served, they served And I've had times where maybe I might have not stood up. But serving this great nation, there is no time in my life since I served that I cannot sit down and not do the pledge. I'm going to put a twist to this. For the people who have never served in the military, and you, sir, if you wanted to go, I can help you, if that's something you want to do. We will always and will be the United States of America. Our veterans served this great nation with honor and devotion, and I truly believe you too have. The future is bright. The beacon of light will shine once again on America. If we lose our freedom, there'll be no place else to go. This is the only country that people come to climb walls, to swim rivers, to parachute in. Why is it? It's what we have to offer. We're all individuals. Behind every American soldier, behind every American hero, there is a story. You have to listen. Our service members like you, your courage and level of commitment humbles me. Thanks for a job well done for all service members. It's been an honor to serve this great nation. I'm proud to be an American. We are not just Americans, we are all citizens. Dreams are made by the people and for the people. The government isn't solution, it's our problem. Today, we refuse to recognize God, country, and family. We are not red or blue. Together, we all are red, white, and blue. When the people fear the government, it's called tyranny. When the government fears the people, it's called liberty. We all breathe the same air. We all cherish our families. Our hopes will live, and your dreams will never die. Ladies and gentlemen, we have serious problems, and we need serious people. And, gentlemen, this time, I hope, even if you stand, I will be satisfied with that. This meeting here tonight could have been utilized on something much different. To all the men and women who fought time and place, nobody really understood. They only knew one thing. They were called, and they went. In the truest sense, that was America. For every war is different, but every war is the same. Heroes die, but they are remembered. We honor them with every brick we lay. I finally came to understand why we're so uncomfortable being called heroes. Heroes are something we create, something we need. It's a way for us to understand how people could sacrifice so much for us, the risks they took, the wounds they suffered. They did it for their buddies. They may have fought for their country, but they died for their friends. The man in front and the man beside them, and if we wish to truly honor these men, we should remember them the way they really were. I'd like to close by thanking us and thanking you all for showing up. I understand where you two stand. I served 42 years in the American Legion, and I wish you the best. I don't want you to step down. We can work this out. I know you're patriots, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Counselor comments. Counselor Shakespeare?
Thank you. I want to, before I get into what I wrote, getting all the mics next to me, I guess, so they can really hear me, what I'm saying. That's all right. I want to thank each individual who got up to the podium this evening and said their thoughts. The young man here and the VFW commander, I appreciate that. He reminded me of my father talking to me years ago. I just want to say, first of all, that during my tenure in the military time, I served as an infantry commander of the 16th Infantry. Had a lot of soldiers. I was also a basic training company commander. And to this young man, it was during Vietnam, I had conscientious objectors every 10 months for an eight-week period. And I cannot ever, of course, they were conscientious objectors, did not believe in killing or firing a weapon, but they were trained, and most of them ended up probably as medics in Vietnam. But not once, not once, that I'm aware of, did any of them ever, ever get harassed for any reason whatsoever because of their beliefs. In all those years in the military, one of my issues here is, there's only one, not in the military, it's only one time can I ever remember saying the Pledge of Allegiance, other than in high school, during my school days. Never had any of the basic training companies, basic trainees say it during all our training, and not during being the company commander or any of my other military service, do I ever remember saying the Pledge of Allegiance, except when my son graduated from West Point Military Academy, we did stand up and do the pledge. Anyways, I want to thank all those individuals for saying what they have. They've exercised their constitutional rights, which I served for and they served for, so everybody can say what they want. And Tom and I both exercised our constitutional rights. So anyways, that being said, let me get on to the Pledge of Allegiance, what I had prepared. What does the Pledge of Allegiance really mean? As I have said before, it was written back in 1892 by a socialist minister, Bellamy, Francis Bellamy, and first published in The Youth's Companion. It was written as follows. "I pledge allegiance to my flag and the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." In 1923, the words "The flag of the United States" were added. In 1954, in response to the communist threat of the times, President Eisenhower encouraged Congress to add the words "Under God," creating the 31-word pledge said today. There has been a lot of controversy over saying the Pledge of Allegiance, which you heard this evening, both in this country and of late in our own town. I always believed we, as citizens of this great country, had constitutional rights under the First Amendment of the Bill of Rights in the Constitution to freedom of speech. I'm beginning to question whether or not we really do, whether or not we have the right to exercise our right to choose what we do and how we do it. I'm in hopes that tonight will be the last time this subject about the Pledge of Allegiance will have to be discussed. That's my hope. That's what I would like to see happen. Everyone has noticed, I'm sure, that both Tom and I did the Pledge of Allegiance tonight at the beginning of the meeting. We decided to do it for various reasons. First, to show that we have absolutely no reservation about doing the pledge and that we are both very patriotic. I'm in hopes that our mayor will stop making these meetings a patriotic event. We do not have to sing the National Anthem, which was proposed at one time, or anything else. We need to get right down to business. Second, to try to get this controversy behind us and move on to doing town business, that which we were elected to do. I have been on this council for almost five years. During that time, this council has never done the pledge. Mayor Carol Dupree, at the first meeting in January, at the suggestion of her husband, Republican Brian Dupree, said that it would be nice to do the pledge because he does it at the State House in Augusta. It was then voted on by the council to make it a permanent fixture on this agenda, which another individual said this evening. Over the past few weeks, I have read numerous emails from around the country, and I say numerous, I think I've received close to 100, if not more, sent to both Tom and I through our town's email system. Some were positive supporters, substantiating the fact that we had a constitutional right not to stand and do the pledge. Most, however, were hate-filled messages, taking their anger out on us. Some were even from local citizens of Hampden and other communities. We received one from a dentist in Bangor and another from a dentist in Brewer, one from an individual working for a major insurance company in Florida, and recently, one from a teacher of a school in South Carolina. One called us, and I hate to say these names, I'm going to keep it clean, one called us Communist Pinkos. Another said we would make good shark bait, along with President Obama. I cannot repeat in public what some of the others said, but they were mostly all hate-filled, demeaning messages calling us unpatriotic traitors. We did not take any of them personally because we realized that their negative response was from seeing one-sided edited excerpts of the town meetings on YouTube. These excerpts were placed on YouTube for one reason and one reason only, to demean both Tom and myself in an effort to turn the public's opinion against both of us. It's unfortunate, however, that's what all this is all about, a hate-filled effort that began with an accusation supposedly against one male town counselor either threatening or harassing a videographer from NSCOM at Hussey University, who supposedly was working for an individual of the organization in Hampden called Halo, and passed along from them to State Representative Brian Dupree and then to our town manager. This is what I spoke of at our last town meeting, when I and only I received a phone call out of five male counselors. Since then, Tom and I have received all these hate-filled emails and numerous phone calls from around the country. I had one phone call from Florida, the guy wanted to bring me up, come up here, pack my goods, and ship me to Canada. I had another one saying he was going to get all his Marine buddies together, come up here and teach me a lesson. I want to make it perfectly clear that not all members of Halo have been involved in this malicious behavior, only certain ones. One former counselor, I need not say her name, has put numerous excerpts of myself and Tom at town meetings on YouTube. One was when I stated that I thought doing the Pledge of Allegiance at a town meeting was ludicrous. She stated that I said I thought the Pledge of Allegiance was ludicrous. She proudly puts her picture and her name under the excerpt. Other Halo members also have put excerpts of both Tom and I doing the Pledge of Allegiance on YouTube. They then asked the viewers to send us nasty, hate-filled emails. These other individuals who has given that organization called Halo a bad name. The problem here, in my opinion, is the interaction of certain members of Halo trying to control council members. It was demonstrated at the last town meeting when Representative Brian Dupree said in anger, "We won, you lost, get over it." How sad for our state representative to say such a thing. Representative Dupree, who is "we" in reference to "we won, you lost"?
Wait, wait, wait. We are not going to do this. Please do not pick members of the public to talk about.
The problem is also demonstrated by a comment made about my op-ed in Bangor Daily News. This citizen of Hampden, who is apparently a member of Halo, I don't have to say her name, she just uses an anonymous name, what is shameless Shakespeare and Brand? Halo came about because of them and the comp plan. They tried to railroad through Hampden citizens. Now they, Shakespeare and Brand, are beside themselves because they are outnumbered on the council and their actions... on the council and their actions are monitored by recording the meetings. Hamden went to the post and ousted the culprits. Bran and Shakespeare are next. Then maybe we can accomplish something. My question is, what do certain members of Halo want to accomplish? I'm in hopes, I'm going to leave that out because the mayor doesn't want me to say anything. Tom and I are in hopes that we as a council can all move forward and do what we were elected to do. Not spend our time running around in circles reacting to attacks by certain members. There are no members here. And Tom and I are not heroes, as we were told, for not saying the pledge. Okay? It was reaction, a statement we made. And Tom and I, as long as we, you know, we're talking about making motions to honor the veterans out on the walls, on the monuments. Believe me, I honor the veterans on the monuments out there. My name's out there. I helped construct it. My son's name is out there on the wall. He fought in Iraq. He's my hero. Believe me, I honor all the veterans. I lost guys in Vietnam. So, you know, let's just do the Pledge of Allegiance. That's fine. But leave all the other stuff out. And let's do town business. Let's get to town business. That's what the citizens want here. Thank you.
Any counselor comments?
I, if Counselor Dupree wishes to rebut what he said.
He's not a counselor.
Representative Dupree, I'm Counselor Dupree, I'm sorry. Representative Dupree, no. Okay. Okay. Since it is near eight o'clock, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute, or ten-minute recess, five-minute. We'll take a five-minute recess until eight o'clock and then we'll return.